Okay, we're on. Thank you. Okay, now for the real gavel. Good evening. This is Tuesday, it is Tuesday, December 15th. This is a special city council meeting for the City of Tegucay where we're going to discuss the different options for Catawba Park. Can't believe we're finally talking about Catawba Park. You can stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you that have been here before, I sometimes say, oh, I'm sorry. Move to silence. Thank you. May be seated. Now, for those of you who have never been here before, sometimes I say, we're going to stand for the National Anthem. I say that a lot. I always go like, what am I talking about?
And then he starts singing.
Well, I will be, my last city council meeting, one year from now, I will sing the National Anthem.
All right.
No, I won't.
Oh, come on!
No, I won't. No. I'll play it.
There we go.
Okay, so who's taking over? Charlie, you taking this meeting? Okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before we get into the financial discussion, our Parks and Recreation Director, Joey Bletton, just kind of refresh everybody's memory on the park. So, Joey, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having me tonight to discuss such an exciting topic. Before you have Catawba Park as we see it today, this has gone through a lot of transformation since we first brought on Camco to design everything. What you'll see, starting on the city-owned property, will be the, I'm sorry, we switched to Phase 1. So, what you have in front of you is Phase 1, which includes five baseball/softball fields. Big components of it is obviously that, but another main aspect to it is the open play meadow that you see there and the playground that we're able to fit in as part of that. Another main component of it is the main loop and obviously the parking lot. It'll be exciting to have a facility that actually has parking at it and not create such a challenge. But the open play meadow obviously allows us to move some of our community events down there. And the baseball/softball complex will allow us to not only support our local league play, but also give us opportunity to run tournaments on the weekends as well. So, Phase 1, as we're getting ready to talk about and the funding options through that, that's kind of a overhead view of that.
Mayor, council, one thing that actually Ms. Overman asked me about via email, in the cost estimates I sent you, y'all saw $300,000 for playground. So, just below the play meadow, you see that green area with a yellow rectangle? That's where the first phase of a playground. And it's a very large multifaceted component with the rubberized safety surfacing, just like you have at Trailhead. So, that would be Phase 1 of the playground. The rest of that area, as we continue to fund, you know, future phases and things of that nature, we can add on additional play equipment. We can keep natural areas at picnic areas to it, but it's a pretty substantial, larger than what used to be at Trailhead, piece of equipment. So, just wanted to point out that now that the engineers have identified where at least the first part of the playground goes, just wanted to point that out to you.
We also do envision that being ADA compliant as well with the surfacing and the actual structure as well.
Yep. All right, and with that...
Can I ask a quick question about the layout here? So, I'm looking at the image and thank you for just going over the updated version. So, I'm seeing the, like, there's like a triangle and a circle too as well on the green next to the curve. Is that like a outdoor stage amphitheater?
Yes, that's future amphitheater, but it's not included in Phase 1 as far as the funding.
Okay, what phase would that one be?
It could be in any subsequent phase. Right now, I mean, we spend probably, what did we figure, Joey, about 10 grand a year with all the concerts on the mobile stage? So, it's not an astronomical expense. So, we can still program down there without the amphitheater.
You're about 1,500 per concert that we'd have, not including the sound.
Okay. Thanks.
Or, as we like to say, as soon as somebody wants the amphitheater named after them, it gets built.
And I guess, like, thinking about the concerts, because they're conducted, you know, like on the baseball fields, they've got the lights. Does this area as well, is that fitted?
You will have lighting around the drive loops around, but not interior on the meadow itself.
Okay.
But it is irrigated and will be turf grass. So, it'll be a nice manicured lawn. It's not just going to be overseed weeds. Yeah, it'll get the same care and treatment as what the sports fields will from a turf grass standpoint, but no lights on it, just around the periphery, lighting the main driveway loop through there.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions on the actual Phase 1 part before we move on? All right. Mayor and council, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Walter Goldsmith and Amy Vettner with First Tryon, our financial advisors, and they will walk you through the presentation that y'all have got. It's also on your screens up at the dais. So, Walter, whenever y'all want me to switch a slide, just tell me.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to start here. On your first page here, the first thing that we did is we just wanted to lay out the different phases for Catawba Park. Phase 1, as we just heard about, is estimated to be about $6.1 million. And then Phase 2, we have about $6.7 million in that phase for a total of about $12.8 million at this point. Phase 1, we've assumed that it could, you know, we could issue debt on this as early as June 2021. That was one of our assumptions. And then we'll go over the revenues that have been identified in more detail, but currently there's about $2.25 million of revenue that's identified that could be used as cash towards the project. Then that will leave about $3.8 million left to finance on Phase 1. The other thing we wanted to keep in mind is that there could also be other, you know, parks and recreation projects in the future that you might want to consider as well. So, that's the overview of the projects and the costs of the different phases. So, what we're going to go into next is the different types of structures that we could use to finance Catawba Park. And we were kind of tasked with bring good ideas and bring not-so-good ideas. So, the first one is a go-to structure that we use quite a bit in the state of South Carolina, and that is an 8% GEO bond. An 8% GEO bond simply means that, under state law, you're allowed to issue up to 8% of your assessed value as general obligation bond debt, and it doesn't need to be voted on. So, it's a very simple structure. It's a cost-effective structure. Doesn't require a bond referendum, so it's, you know, it is our go-to structure. So, the first thing we did was we looked at Tegucay's debt capacity under that 8% limit. And while you have about $5.4 million of 8% assessed value, you have about $2.4 million that you're already using of that. So, that really leaves you with a balance of about $2.9 million. And that will, so it's not quite enough to get us to that $3.8 million that we need to finance Phase 1. So, that idea really doesn't quite work right now, but it could be something that could be applicable for Phase 2 or some other financing down the road. And that's another piece of it. We don't typically like to recommend you using up all your 8% capacity because you might need it for, you know, some other use. So, we really wanted to focus on the two alternatives that we do think could work. The first is a general obligation bond, but a voter-approved general obligation bond, which would require a referendum. The advantages of this structure really are lowest cost of debt, the simplest, kind of most commonly-used structure, does not consume any of your 8% debt capacity, so that it's sort of unlimited once the voters approve it. The big disadvantage, though, is that it would require a bond referendum, and there's no risk of nonapproval. So, that's something just to keep in mind. And from a timing standpoint, it would take a little bit longer to get done. A referendum would take, you know, six to nine months plus the financing. So, you know, you're looking maybe 12 months out before you could actually issue the debt on Catawba Park. One other advantage of a referendum, though, is that you could include both phases at the same time in that referendum, as well as any other parks and rec projects you might have. So, it could be more of a package deal, and you do not need to issue all the debt all at once. So, you can still phase it from an issuance standpoint, and you're not required to issue all of it either. So, you know, down the road, if you determine this isn't a priority for us, you're not obligated to issue the debt, but it gives you the authority to issue it. And also the authority to issue, to levy the debt millage if you should need to do so. The installment purchase revenue bond is another structure that is pretty common in South Carolina. It is a little bit higher costing than the GEO bond. You know, it does not require a referendum. It does require a lien on likely Catawba Park itself. So, a bank would require some kind of collateral for that, for that structure. And it is considered a little bit riskier from the bank's perspective. So, it does, you know, they do ask for a higher interest rate. It's a little bit more complicated, more documentation. So, there's real estate expenses involved, so the costs are a little bit higher related to that structure. And you can make the payments under, you know, out of any legally available funds that you have. And that really goes with the GEO bond, too. So, while the GEO bond, if you were deficient in some way, you would be required to levy or, you know, tax debt millage, you would, you know, you're not required, you know, so the installment purchase revenue bond, you can use the same set of revenues basically under either of those structures.
If I can, real quick, I mean, just so council's aware, and you may already be aware. So, we've got all three of these things in play currently right now for various projects. So, the golf course Glenon Center was done under a referendum and was originally issued in 2005. You've got GEO bond for current City Hall, the gravel lot at the Beach Club, and your fire station. And your installment purchase revenue bond, your most recent one was on the police station. So, we've got all three in play, just so you're aware.
Quick question. I mean, I heard you mention you have to have significant collateral, and you mentioned the property. Are we allowed to use the property as collateral?
Yeah.
I'm asking anybody.
I'm going to defer to these guys, but, I mean, that would have to be vetted out, I would assume, during the bid process, you know, on the funding, you know, before, between first and second reads generally is when the RFPs from the financial institutions are due. And then the bond attorney with Haynesworth-Sinkler Boyd, Paul Truce has retired. Jeremy, I forget Jeremy's last name.
Cook.
Yeah, Jeremy Cook, out of Paul's office, would handle this particular debt issuance for us with Haynesworth-Sinkler. But they would work with whoever was doing the bonds, doing the funding, on what that collateral would be. Could land be it? Yeah, if that's what council wanted to offer up as collateral, the land that, at least the 11 acres the city owns. Yeah, good faith backstop pledges as far as millage, you know, and things like that could also be incorporated into there.
Could we offer up the mayor?
Hmm? Could we offer up the mayor?
If they'll take him, yes.
Was your question whether, I assume you own the land outright?
Not.
We own 11 of the 62 acres.
Okay, so the 11 acres that you do own outright, and assuming there had not been any restriction in whoever gave it to you, you know, if they put a restriction that you can never put a mortgage on this, then obviously we couldn't.
No, we own it free, clearly.
So, if you own it outright, then you could put a lien on it.
Yeah, I think ideally, you know, banks typically want a physical asset of some sort, so we may have to get a little bit, it may depend on the bank as to whether they're willing to accept that as collateral, but that's something that we would have to vet out during that process. So, now, let's, the next page speaks to the costs, and that's something I mentioned a couple of times, the difference, the interest rates would be a little bit higher under an IPRB structure versus a GEO structure. Costs of issuance are a little bit higher. So, this next slide really speaks to what this means in terms of debt service for the city. So, it is a little bit more expensive on the interest rate side for an IPRB. We're estimating about 0.25% or 25 basis points. The costs of issuance are a little bit higher for the IPRB, about $30,000 or so, and, you know, that's really to account for additional real estate costs and documentation costs and attorney fees and such. But when you really start to look at the difference in annual debt service and those costs amortized over the life of the loan, whether you pick a 10-year scenario or a 15-year scenario, it's about $10,000 a year. So, it's not a, you know, we always want to be cost-conscious, that's kind of our job, but when you're trying to make a decision between GEO and an IPRB, it's probably more likely going to come down to what's the most practical approach from a structure standpoint in getting it done. So, and then the other thing I would just note on the 10-year versus 15-year, 10-year, you're obviously paying less interest over the life of the loan because you're paying the debt down more quickly. But the 15-year structure might give you a little bit more flexibility on the cash flow side. So, any questions on the debt?
Can you say that one more time about the difference between going the GEO, the GEO bond way or the IPRB? You said that the way it balances out, it's only $10,000 difference per year...
Correct, yep.
Between GEO versus...
Right, so if you look at, for instance, the 10-year structure, and you look at those annual debt service payments in each year, it's about $430,000 a year for the GEO column. If you do the IPRB, it's about, just about $440,000 a year, rounded to about $10,000 difference.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, many of our clients might look at that and say, it's only $10,000. Why do we want to wait to go through a referendum process? Interest rates could rise by the time we get to referendum and we get ready to issue our debt. Construction prices could rise, and so let's just go the IPRB route today. Oh, sorry about that.
Sorry, thank you. So, clients might look at it and say, let's just go the IPRB route. It's only $9,000 more, and we can move much faster. Also get where people might say, well, $9,000 is a lot of money. This is a big project. We want to let the voters have their say in it. So, there's really no right or wrong answer, but I would say it generally comes down to, do we want to move quickly? Do we think it's an important project? And so, if so, $9,000 at the end of the day isn't a lot of money.
And does that take into account, like, the cost of issuance?
Yes, yep.
Right.
Yeah, so all of that is built into these schedules.
Okay.
From what I can tell, Ms. Ash, in looking in the top portion of that chart, you can see your cost of issuance, your interest rate, things like that. The only thing, and it's a nominal, very nominal fee, on the GEO, obviously, you've got your election expense. And if, you know, a lot of folks, now, I know Fort Mill School District uses, you know, volunteers, so to speak, but we may want to look at hiring an outside agency to come in to help educate the public, you know, go into various civic groups and things like that. So, you may have some kind of nominal cost there. Election, probably with us going solo, Bob, give or take seven grand as an expense there. And then, you know, your consulting gig, I don't know, five, six grand possibly. Really haven't looked into it. So, you've got a few other things on that GEO that aren't here, but across the board, they've got the cost of issuance, which is going to cover your legal fees and all that good stuff. On your IPRB, you're not going to have those two other things that I just mentioned, but everything else, they've got included in here.
Okay. And the six- to 12-month timeframe, is that the timeframe it takes to get the referendum, like, to a point where people can vote on it? Or is that, like, we've already got voter, either voter approval, and now it's going to take six to 12 months to, like, get everything ready?
Sure. Both of these financings will take about the same amount of time from the time you say go. You say 90 days?
Yeah, it's usually about three months.
Yep. And so, with the installment purchase revenue bond, if you said tonight, let's go, then roughly 90 days from now, we would have closed on that financing. You have money in the bank. So, we've, during that 90 days, we've gotten legal documents drafted, your approvals that you need to give. We've gone up to an RFP to banks. We've gotten them to bid. We've closed the transaction. So, 90 days from now, money's in your bank account to go start spending. With the GEO bond, we're now waiting for, when is the next time we can get on a referendum? So, when can we hold that? It's a little bit of work that's got to be done in preparation for that. And then most of our clients would say, well, we're not going to start the financing process and incur these costs until we know whether the voters approved it or not. So, then from the date we have the election and we know the results, another 90 days beyond that. And so, that gets to that, the GEO, while it is $9,000 cheaper, is longer to put in place. And during that extra time period, interest rates could rise, construction costs could go up, which would offset. So, you could go through that entire process, and we look back and say, well, that ended up costing us money because rates rose and construction cost increased.
Yeah.
And the process for doing a referendum, council has to vote at a public meeting on setting the question, all right? Once that's done, then myself or Katie would send that over to Wanda Hemphill with York County Elections. From the time that starts, you've got, I believe it's 90 days before the election. It may be, it may be 120 days before you could actually even have it. By the time you go through that, you're getting to the point where you're, like, in a midsummer, potentially, timeframe. Obviously, next November, there's also an election. You know, do you wait? Yeah, if you're doing it, if you wait, you do it in November. Now, you're decreasing your election expense on it, but you've still got all your other costs. But that's, that would be our process, if, on y'all's end. And then, obviously, Walter, Amy, bond attorneys, they've got all the other work that they have to do, you know, as soon as that referendum vote is cast.
With the IPRB, you know, it's a little bit riskier for banks to take us on. Is that a major concern, that we wouldn't, somebody wouldn't take us on? We've done one before. We have, you know, really good credit. Like, is that a concern? Or it...
I don't think it's a concern. I think you will find a bank, or multiple banks, that would be willing to, you know, take on Tegucay as a credit.
Right.
And there's a track record there, so that's helpful. It's a growing area. It's a recognizable name for them. A lot of the banks are local, so they'll know who, you know, they'll know about Tegucay. So, no, I mean, it's really, it just may translate into a little bit higher interest rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, let's just take, for instance, if we're borrowing $3.8 million. We have that rainy day fund of, what? Do we have a cash fund that we're not, we don't touch except for emergency fund?
Now, you've got your fund balance reserve this time of year typically is when we're actually dipping into that until the taxes come in, and then we replenish it.
So, what is that, what's the lowest level that ever gets to?
Bob, 2.1?
Right now, we're at 2 million.
So, there's 2 million in collateral and 3.8 million. I don't think that's much risk. I mean...
It won't necessarily, from a bank's perspective, be your credit profile in terms of whether you're going to default or not. One of the things is, banks struggle if we go out with a 15-year loan. So, we just want to manage expectations, that it's not like we will get 10 banks that line up to loan you a 15-year IPRB. You know, we're talking, if we did a 15-year, three banks?
Yeah, maybe three or four.
So, you're saying 15's more risky, and they were less likely to do that than a 10?
Well, it's not, yes and no. The banks, it has nothing to do with their risk profile of you as a credit. They just don't like to lend 15 years, 20 years. So, if we went to Bank of American, Wells Fargo, the big banks today and said, will you make a 15-year loan to anybody? You, Rock Hill, Charlotte, on an IPRB structure, they would say, no, we're not willing to give you a 15-year fixed rate. So, we'll get some of the more regional banks, like Regions Bank, BB&amp;T, but now Truist, SunTrust, First Citizens will play in that space, but the big firms will not.
I see.
And the shorter the amortization, and that's just a function of their view that interest rates are going to rise. They don't want to lock into 15-year loans while interest rates are low. So, if you said, we want to do a five-year or 10-year, we'll get more banks. When we start to say 10 or 15, we start to lose some of those banks who will just say, we're not interested. Has nothing to do with Tegucay. We're just, we don't want to do a 15-year loan right now.
And that's just with the IPRB, though?
We can set whatever length of time for GEO bond with a referendum. We could say 20, 30 years. We could say...
So, it's, I know we're getting way into the weeds here, but bear with us. You've got two things. There's how long you want to, you're comfortable amortizing the debt over, which could be out to 30 years for either GEO or an IPRB. So, you could say, these are long-lived assets. We're comfortable going 30 years. That doesn't mean a bank is willing to loan 30 years. And we're trying to match those two up to say, okay, we want to be able to find banks who are willing to loan, and we want to go out on a term that's comfortable for you all. And so, if you said to us, we want to do a 30-year IPRB, Amy and I would be saying to you, we're not going to get a fixed rate from a bank. They just won't do that in the current market. That's why we're showing you the 10 and the 15. Now, if you go the, if there is a market where you can go out 30 years, that's in the publicly sold bond market, which is a lot more work and cost than what we're assuming these are all bank deals, which is, again, we may be getting way into the weeds. But there is a way to do that that's more expensive.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Yep. Great. So, now we're going to transition into the affordability side. So, the first thing that we did, or Charlie had helped us with, was identify what revenues might be available to repay the debt service. So, that's what this chart really shows. And also, what is the current fund balance or current balance in those particular accounts? Because one of the things we assumed right up front was what cash is available to decrease the amount that needs to be borrowed. So, in the gray, very first line there, that's the cash that's available as of in 2020. So, you have your fund balance. About 1.1 million could be applied to pay down the debt or reduce the amount of debt that needs to be issued. There's some parks and rec impact fees that have accumulated, about $938,000 of those. You have some H-tax, hospitality tax, fund balance. There's some fee in lieu of on Windhaven that might be available. And then the other thing that we assumed, there's nothing available right now, but you'll see that second to last column, we've assumed that any, as your debt service rolls off and matures, that 50% of the revenues that were being, that are currently being used to pay for debt service would now be allocated to repay debt service on this debt issue. So...
Amy, let me jump in real quick, since Bob and I are the ones that gave you all these numbers. Just for council, your parks and rec impact fees is a finite number because it's based on rooftops still to come. So, the 938, 443 that's showing here, in the time that we have given that, you know, and developed that number before turning it over to them, we've had 47 new impact fees come in since October 1, right, Bob?
We have 41 in the bank right now.
With six coming this week. So, basically, in the week, you're at 47 more. So, that number, you know, the cash available by the time, you know, we were, council would have taken on the actual debt issuance, is going to be higher than the 2.254 that you see now. But that is a finite number. The Tegucay forever balance, or, excuse me, that running 8,000, we feel like that's a conservative number. Yeah, that's just if we only do Taste of York County, and even then, that's probably low by maybe $2,000, $3,000. You know, with other fundraising efforts that we'll get, you know, work to get them started on post-groundbreaking, you know, you could be looking at $13,000 to $15,000, you know, coming in per year through there. But we felt 8,000 was a comfortable number. Your H-tax, Bob, I mean, the way it's trending at this point, we probably could have, allocate more.
Yes, we can.
Bob, what would you say, another 10, $15,000?
Another 10, $15,000 could be $30,000.
So, again, trying to look at those numbers on the lower end. The fee in lieu, we've discussed, the 111, that's in the bank right now. The rest of, again, that is a finite number based on the number of dwelling units going into Windhaven at $1,500 each. Whether or not they come in earlier or not, it won't exceed that 20, 30-year based on what Lennar is telling us, you know, what their construction timeframe is. They want to be gone in seven years. Done, finished, out the door. So, the 50%, I do want to say, on the 50% bond debt, that's based on what today's payments are. You know, so Walter and Amy and Will with their group have helped us in some of our amortization schedules. You know, you've got some rap debt, so as we pay down things, other payments get a little higher, you know, that kind of thing. So, but this is just based on what we're paying out today. That comes off, taking 50%. So, in 2030, you see the big, or in 2031, you see the big jump because this place is paid off. Golf course is paid off. 2034, police and fire are gone, because I think 2032 is when fire's gone, and then two years later, PD... Because I think 2032 is when fire is gone, and then two years later, PD is gone. So just wanted to explain kind of the thought process behind those numbers. Obviously, as we get closer to council considering of funding ordinance, Walter, Amy, Will and their team will be working with Bob and I to get those numbers more accurately updated.
Just so I'm clear, with either option, we only have to take the debt on when it's time to take the debt on. For example, we can make the payments with what we have cash on hand up until that point. Is that correct? Or no?
Yes. I mean, you can start construction with your own funds, and then, you know, when you're ready to issue the debt, you could do it that way. Then, yeah, we've certainly seen that.
Yeah. There's, there's risk, obviously, that's very small, but if for some reason you spent your cash on hand, you're partway through construction and interest rates have risen dramatically, or, you know, for whatever reason, can't find a loan. So our comfort level is always that you borrow all the money you need, have all the cash you need, and now you can just say to the construction people, we got all the money in the bank, go spend it.
Yeah. Is there a, like, pay it, pay it off early penalty with either of these options? Say, you know, we're able to somehow come up with additional funding over time? Can we, you know, get rid of the debt earlier without penalty?
Yeah, most of the loans that we do and we see do have some kind of, you know, pre, prepayment option on them. So if that's something that was important, we'd make sure that that was in the bid form so that the bids that we received had that optionality in there for you to prepay early with no penalty.
Okay. I'm just thinking, maybe somebody comes in.
Well, to correct me from wrong, but in the past, when, when there was a prepayment penalty, I'm thinking like maybe some of the, the stuff that we did with Andy Smith and BBNT, it's like 1% or something like that.
That's right.
On, on a payoff, on an early payoff. So you're not, it wasn't an astronomical figure type thing, so.
Okay.
But then a lot of them that we've done, you know, you get a, kind of a, a one-time pay it early kind of thing.
Right.
Yep.
The only, just looking at these different revenue sources, the only one that gives me a little bit of pause is the fee in lieu from Windhaven, only because, you know, obviously we, we want to make sure that they have something too down the road. But that's something that we can maybe work with on the backend for other recreational opportunities, for sure.
Sure.
Yeah. Mayor Protem Machunas and I actually discussed the Windhaven fees earlier today. And, you know, one, the Windhaven people are going to need, yeah, as they, as those families move in over the coming years, they're going to want Catawba Park too. You know, that, that's where, that's where we're going to, I mean, without it, you know, we're, we're going to have, we're in a struggle serving them from a programming standpoint. But two, would love to get enough residents in there to get input on what they want, you know, in the, in that park space. And they are going to have amenity built by the developer as well, with pool, clubhouse, playground, that type thing. So it's not like they're going to have nothing. But definitely get your point. You know, something I thought of today is, is Gus and I were, were riding and showing a potential commercial folks some properties. We rode into Windhaven. We, we're definitely going to have to be careful what we put back there, because the only way to get there is through a neighborhood, you know, it's through a residential street. So, you know, having a regional draw type facility may not be the most, the most wanted thing by those future residents. But point well taken, absolutely.
I guess our current parks are kind of set up, though similar, like if you think of Turner and Rundy.
All neighborhood parks.
Those are all neighborhood. Win, I mean, Windjammer, geez, so.
The folks in those neighborhoods don't really.
Not super excited about it.
True, true.
Maybe we shouldn't make that same mistake.
Yeah, back to you.
Okay, great. So in total, there's about $2.2 million on cash on hand right now. I think when we first started looking at this, it may have been a year ago. So we almost have another year's worth of revenue, you know, 572,000. That's kind of a nice cushion for you all going forward. But a portion of that could also be applied to reduce the debt as well. So we'd look at all those, and I would presume, you know, by the time we went to get, issue the debt, there'd be additional cash at that point as well. So, so this gives us a nice revenue stream to be able to size a bond issue on, so. And if there were ever a shortfall or a significant shortfall, you always have the fallback of, on a GO bond, you could levy, you know, debt millage. But with the installment purchase revenue bond, there's also a mechanism to be able to levy debt millage as well. It's a little more complicated, but it involves basically using your, your 8% capacity on a very short-term, you know, one year's worth of payments to be able to levy the debt millage, to, to make that payment, so. And we have some clients that use that strategy and that you go into an IPRB wanting, you know, that's how they're going to repay the debt. Most IP people, or most, most of our clients that issue an IPRB are doing what Tika K might be considering doing and using other available funds to make those payments and not levy debt millage. So the next slide will now, now puts everything together. We'll show you that column three is that same revenue stream that we had on that prior page. Column two is just kind of a running cumulative balance each year of what's left in that fund. Column four is the cash, the 2.25 million coming out. And then columns five through seven are the debt payments. And for the, for these scenarios, we use the IPRB structure since it was pretty close to the GO and it was a little bit more conservative with the, on the cost side. So you'll have your principal amount of 3.8 million, the interest coming in, and then your debt service of 439,000 or so a year. And then you get to column eight, which does show an annual deficit in each year, but we're not too concerned about that, because the real column that we want to focus on is that final column, which is the ending balance. You have accumulated funds from those various revenue sources that can be used and applied to, towards those years where there may be, you know, annual shortfalls. And I think if we, also if we applied some of that existing cash to reduce the bond issue, you know, that could also help eliminate some of these, these deficits in those years. And that's the 10-year scenario. Now, if we flip the page to the 15-year scenario, same setup, column three is your, your revenues coming in, columns five through seven are the proposed, the proposed debt. And here, you don't have any of those annual deficits. It's 15 years, so you're stretching the debt out a little bit longer. So you're, you know, making more interest payments over time, but it's a little bit more affordable and gives you a little bit more cushion in the event there's, you know, a significant shortfall in any of those revenue streams. So it might give you a little bit more comfort on that end. And then we could always look at doing something in, in the middle, too. So, you know, oftentimes when we bid this out, we might bid, you know, give, we might ask banks for both 10-year and 15-year structures and just see what we get and evaluate the best option at that point. So I think either of these would, would work based on the revenues, you know, as estimated right now. So really, the, the last page really just speaks, just summarizes both options for you. Just as a reminder, the GO bond requires a referendum, the installment purchase revenue bond does not. You know, timing, it's a little more, you can issue the IPRB debt a little more quickly. We're estimating it could be middle of 2021 versus a GO bond, probably the earliest you could, you could come to market on something, on a referendum GO bond would be early 2022. You know, we mentioned the debt costs are not that significant between the GO and the installment purchase revenue bond. But there, you know, there's, there's some, you know, annual cost savings going to a 15-year structure versus a shorter structure, but then there are savings overall with the shorter structure versus the longer structure. So it really just depends on what, there's no right or wrong answer on that, it's just a comfort level with what you all want on that. Security on the GO is the, the debt millage, you know, and then on the, the security on the installment purchase is the collateral that would be in place. And then your repayment sources are really, could be the same under either, either of those structures. With the, the, if there was a shortfall, though, on the GO side, you could levy debt millage very easily. On the installment purchase revenue bond, you could issue an 8% GO bond till then levy the debt millage. So it's a multi-step process to get there, so. So with that, I mean, I think that's, that's what we had, so.
Thank you. That was helpful.
Yeah. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very clear.
Thank you.
So, as I, as I explained to council on a prior email, you know, you, you're definitely going to get another multiple bites at the apple, so to speak, before, you know, placing your final vote that would actually push forward the, the, the debt or incur the debt. You know, what I'm hoping to get tonight is, you know, are you wanting to do the referendum route? Okay? Or are you looking to do the IPRB route? All right? Yeah, the, the 8%, using, utilizing the 8%. Yeah, and technically, there is one other option that, that wasn't presented tonight, and that's just, whatever we have on cash, that's all we build. Yeah, 2.254 million ain't going to get you very far. Yeah, ba- based on what the, what the current cost estimates are. Also, you know, we, we found as, after Amy and Walter, you know, got us the presentation, we were able to get it to you guys, I shared the updated cost estimates with you from the engineers. You're looking at phase one at just under 5.6, but rounding, we'll call it 5.6. Got phase two actually late this afternoon and got a phase, phase three, which would be, you know, everything else that's left after the, those first two phases. And all in, you're at a 14.8 estimated costs. Okay? Your phase two is right at 5.6 million as well, and that's with the artificial turf on the soccer field. So to finish out the rest of the park, that brings your balance. So really, those first two phases that includes playground and the mult, and the, the, the open play meadow and all the athletic fields, you're at about 11.6 million. Okay? Now, the, the 6.1 Walter and Amy were using really was a number that was generated by us based on available revenues. How much could we take on? Yeah? And you can see with, with the way they did it, you know, the cash on hand, you know, we're borrowing the, the balance to get to the 6.1. You're to the good, if I recall correctly, let me back it up a screen here. Yeah, right there. So in the earlier years, you're to the good by, you know, a little over $200,000. That's a, that's a good cushion. And then as you get towards the tail end, you know, your, your last year, you're to the good by 153, which is still a good cushion. You know, we're not bare bones, and it's doing that first phase the right way. You know, we're not skimping. Now, we did remove things that they had originally thrown in there that we just identified as it was a little overkill. You know, we don't, we don't need to do that because it's just not the way people are doing things now at these facilities, like press box, you know? So the concession stand doesn't need to be two stories, one story is fine. And that was just in looking at facilities that have been built within the last, what was shipyard done? Five years ago?
Yeah, just around.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, so looking at current multipurpose facilities in, in the state. So what we're hoping to get tonight is, which direction do you, do you think you might be leaning? Where, where do you want to go? Do we need to talk referendum more? Do you, do you, do you need to talk IPRB more? I, yeah, and talking with Bob, talking with Joey, our recommendation would be that we go the IPRB. Let's get that going. Let's get that, get phase one open. And then.
The second one would be a GO later on.
Then, then we look at that, that, that referendum GO to perhaps finish out the rest of the park. And it also gives us enough time to work with y'all to identify, okay, what other specific projects would you want to put in there? Let's get those costed. You know, we're already working, potentially working on some. This year, we're getting some engineering on trails and things like that. Yeah, there's some ideas of some things that could be done up here. You know, we keep hearing pickleball courts, you know? Maybe there's something to do over in Windjammer, or, shoot, Windjammer. No, no, sorry. We're not doing anything at Windjammer. We're not doing it at Windjammer. Windhaven, you know, what does that look like? And then that, at that point, we've now shown the public that a park we've been talking about since 2005. All right? We, we told you we're going to get, we're going to get started this year, we got it started this year, we're going to open it next year, and look how great it looks, and we didn't increase your taxes in doing it. Now we can go back and say, all right, look, here's all the other things we want to finish out. Here's, you know, we, we want you to do the referendum. Yeah, I think it's a little easier to sell the referendum at that point to the public, to the voters. But again, that's our recommendation. If council wants to go in another direction, absolutely, that's what we'll do.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct that the, the 6.1 number that we're floating around right now could very easily, after the RFP process, be less than that?
Well, technically, the estimate from the engineers is, yeah, is already less than that. But yes, once you go through the, we would not bring you the ordinance for the funding until the bids are done.
Okay.
And we've got those in. So, yeah, it could be a, a lesser number.
And question number two, do you want an answer for, I mean, do you want an individual answer from us right now?
Or a group collective direction?
Well, I'm comfortable with either IPRB, either 10 or 15. And I think, like you said, three, four, or five years down the road, you do a GO and finish it off, you know? Especially after this place is, you know, pretty much paid off and a couple other obligations we got.
Sure.
I mean, I'm comfortable with 10 or 15, whatever you guys like.
10-year IPRB?
I just don't see a referendum yet. I just don't see that happening.
Well, I do like what, what Amy mentioned, when we put it out for bid, we can have them do it as a 10 or 15 and then make the decision once we see those bids come in. I mean, if there's not a drastic difference on the interest rate between, you know, 10 and 15, I mean, right now, they're, they're, they're estimating a 25 basis points, you know, but obviously, you know, let's say for some crazy reason, it comes in at 10 basis points. Not saying that it would, but, okay. Well, ma- maybe we do push it to a 15 to keep more of that cash long-term, give us a, a, a bigger safety blanket.
Yeah, I think, you know, obviously, this is our focus and this is what we've wanted to accomplish this whole time. So this, this has to move forward, and I'm glad we're here. Both, we need it from a recreational standpoint, and I think the amenity that it's going to give the city long-term is going to be great for tournaments, like you mentioned, Joey. I think with either of these options, it poses a risk, right? And so anytime that we are borrowing large sums of money, I want to be very careful with what I'm putting my name on, especially because we've seen, you know, this happen in the past and things that we're still paying for and how it impacts us today, you know, something that was taken out 20 years ago. But I agree with both David and Gus that I think we should go the IPRB route and leave it open to the 10 or 15.
Alicia?
So I, I have a little bit of a, a different, well, not a little, I, I, I kind of like the GO bond route better than the IPRB. And a couple reasons why. Well, one, I love the ability to let the voters decide, right? We know that, you know, that's a big deal to us, and this is a lot of debt for us to take on. And just getting their buy-in upfront and making sure that the community supports this and supports it in whole, I think just helps make the process easier as we go through the construction operations increases that will likely be needed as well. GO bonds have consistent success. They're, you know, I mentioned the better buy-in and support from the community. Interest costs are lower, but that's kind of mute because it's, it is, it's not as significant as I thought it would be, so I was really surprised there. And then I think that overall, it, it appears to be easier to manage and less risky because, again, it's backed by the voters. That would be my, my preference. I also like the idea of going ahead and not only looking at both phases, or actually all three phases and getting them done all consistently, either, I'm not sure if it would happen all at the same time or not still, but putting a plan in place that can support all those phases. Because what I, what I worry about, too, like looking at IPRB, is just, you know, and Because what I worry about, too, like looking at IPRB, is just, you know, and then thinking about, oh, we'll leave it up to the next council to make that decision. And I don't have any problem in doing that, but I just like the idea of getting it all done and taken care of. And then, like, what if, let's just say, you know, what if phase one happens and people then start feeling like, oh, well, I thought I'd utilize the park, but maybe I'm not going to, right? Or maybe it's, I don't know. And then you try to issue a GO bond for that and get voter support, and then maybe there's not as much support. I don't know, just trying to think through what potentially are the risks from that side of things, too, if we go one route and then plan in the future to do this or take this route. Those are just, you know, some of my concerns that, you know, I have. And then, I guess, in addition to that, just thinking about overall our park and rec, you know, needs and desires for our community and how that's really a focus for us. Is this an opportunity for us to think more strategically about all the needs regarding parks and rec or other needs regarding parks and recreation within the city and go ahead and tackle them now or at least allocate the funding for them now versus trying to do them like one-off, 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 one-off? And in the process, taking up, you know, potentially, and I know we could do this with GO bonds, too, but taking up portions of like H-Tax and Fee and Lou, which could be allocated for other purposes that we don't, you know, unknown purposes in the future. So that's where I am. I think that, you know, either option would be fine and it gets the job done. I'm not as worried about, or I guess it doesn't concern me regarding the timing because I think it's going to take a long time to get us mobilized and out there and all that stuff anyways. And it sounds like within three months, we potentially could be ready to move forward with the referendum anyways, if, I think, you said you weren't sure if it was 90 days or 120 days.
Or 120. I could check with Juan.
Yeah. So from, so from that perspective, like, we still could be on that, the very same timeline, potentially.
Well, so here's your possible timelines, all right? Right now, we're on track to have phase one out for bid right after the first of the year. All right? I have asked Campco to bid it out for a 90-day period. You know, the longer you give, you know, the GCs to really get into the nitty-gritty on this, the better their numbers are going to get. So that's January, February, you're basically looking, end of March, your bids are back in, all right? On an IPRB standpoint, we would be working with bond attorney to be crafting the ordinance and getting that ready so that at your April meeting, you're able to award on the bid based on Campco's recommendations, and you're able to consider first read, all right? Walter and Amy during that timeframe have gotten it out for bid just prior to your first read, between first and second read, with a second read in May. Now you've got your interest rates. Now you've got your bank identified. Now you know whether it's 10-year, 15-year, that type thing, and you're able to do your second and final read, assuming that those things are what you're looking for. You know, interest rates are at or below what we're projecting and things of that nature. That puts you being able to do your groundbreaking in June, and they're looking at 12 to 16 months on a, 16 being on the high side for completion of phase one. So that puts you, fall of 2022, there's activities down there. You know, your September concert, you know, actually, your October, your Fall Fest in 2021 could be a weekend-long event, or excuse me, 2022, with the GO referendum side, still got your, you know, your bid timeframe, all right? Now you know what this is going to be, assuming this is the route that we're going. That gets delayed to a certain extent because we need to now finish up phase two construction plan, phase three construction plans. So maybe February, maybe March, before we get it out for bid on the 90 days there, the bids come back in. Okay, yep, this is what we want to borrow. Now you got to ask the question. Now you're 30 days out from there, or excuse me, 90, you have potentially 90 days out from there, three months, and they're doing their work, obviously simultaneously. You're looking at possibly not doing your groundbreaking till maybe January of 2022 at that point. Yeah, the park would have to, even with one GC. So it's going to be one set of plans, looking to get the one GC to do the entire thing, obviously in phases. But the park's going to be built in phases, whether it's all funded upfront or, you know, however you want to do it. But just the way the infrastructure works from water and sewer and things like that, you know, from what the engineers have told us, it's most logical, start on the city's property, work your way counterclockwise, or excuse me, clockwise around the park, so to speak. So that's just kind of a summary on what those potential schedules would look like for whatever it's worth.
Yeah, I think you bring up really good points, Alicia. I don't want to dismiss what you're saying because I think everything that you said is valid. Like I had mentioned, there's risk either way, right? And so my concern would be, and maybe that's the answer, right, is that if we go the referendum route and for whatever reason it fails, that's the end of Catawba Park forever, right? There is no option down the road because we won't get funding. And so even if well-intentioned people are coming to the polls to cast their no votes, and maybe it wouldn't be that way, you know, we know we need it. And so my fear would be, okay, that now we don't have that option anymore.
Sure.
And so, but I think you bring up really good points with including everything in it, you know, having that option so that we're not kind of kicking the can down the road and who's going to take on phase two. So I don't want to dismiss what you're saying because I've considered all of those things as myself, but weighing all of those risks and looking at the pros and cons, that's kind of how I got to, the decision that I did.
I mean, so thank you for that. I appreciate that. I, just when I think about the park in general and like really getting it to be what we want it to be, right, in totality, it's a $15 million park. I think getting, you know, one of the big pluses of going GO route is getting public buy-in. And because we're a recreational community and folks are very supportive of this park, I think that, from what we hear all the time, we want Catawba Park, we want Catawba Park, we want Catawba Park. To me, there's not a huge question in mind in terms of, you know, how do people feel about that moving forward? So I feel like, and this is me today on December 15, 2020, and who knows what's going to happen in tomorrow. So, right? But it does, it does ensure that we are, you know, we're getting, we're getting the support from our constituents who are ultimately bearing the cost of either 6 million, 12 million, 15 million.
Well, I think we've already got that. We've had, how many meetings in here? We asked people over the last six years that I've been part of this, what do you want? And we, how many surveys have we done? I used to carry that survey in the trunk of my car with me. I looked at it every day overwhelmingly, every time, every year, every other year, every other. We've asked them, what do you want? They say Catawba Park, Parks and Rec. So we're going to ask them a question we already know the answer to. I mean, you've campaigned. When you campaign, you hear from your people who vote for you, what do they want? They want Catawba Park. And so today, on December 15, we're not sure what they think.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's what we're saying.
Well, it sounds like what you're saying. We've asked them over and over, and if we don't listen to what they said in the last pass, we wasted all that time for nothing. You know, we know what they want. They've told us over and over and over what they want. So I don't think that's an issue.
If I can, something else that, yeah, it may help and may just cloud it even more, I don't know. You know, I think, you know, Walter and Amy have done a good job of demonstrating how we can afford to do, whether it's GO or IPRB, at borrowing, you're looking at three point, just over $3.8 million, okay, based on cash on hand, all right, to get to the 6.1. I don't know that even if the voter said, yes, do the referendum, do it all, and these other projects that have come up, you're looking at upwards of close to $16 million, whether that's 15 years, 20 years, 25 years. I don't know how you, how we afford that without some type of millage increase for certain. You know, so, I mean, that's the other thing to keep in mind is, I mean, yeah, don't get me wrong, if y'all tell Joey, we're going, you know, we're going to build the whole thing, he's going to yell, no take backs and get on out of here. You know, I mean, but that would be my concern is, you know, how do we take on what would ultimately be the largest borrowing that the city's ever done? You know, at 16 million, I mean, that's more than what we took out for T-Cut, if I recall correctly, when we did that acquisition and the SRF loan to fix it. You know, that was maybe 12 total with those two?
Between the two, it was 13 million.
Yeah, 13 million between the acquisitions. So, I mean, you're talking $16 million, and we're coming towards the tail end of, I mean, maybe five to seven years, we're built out, maybe 10, you know, with the commercial stuff. Your residential's built out, you know, there's not more growth, you know, we're infilling at this point. You know, you're going to have additional operational costs as the years go by, where we're going to, you know, future councils will need to issue millage increases at some point, potentially. That's where my worry is on a referendum versus if we take this down and then you've got, you know, two, three years to get comfortable, you know, identify the sources, identify sponsors, you know, as far as the field naming rights and things of that nature that we've talked about, both with the TK Forever as well as with council. I think a lot of people are waiting to see how serious we are about, you know, facility we've been talking about since 2005.
Well, too, I want to address the issue of kicking the can down the road, to use your term, Heather. Just by the nature of what we are sitting up here, every two years, either three or two people have the opportunity to not be back on council. I mean, that's just the way it goes. I mean, how long was the police station planned, talked about, then planned, then decided, then how are we going to pay for it, then whatever? But somehow, the group of us, we're the ones that quote-unquote "built" it. Well, years and years of planning went into that happening. And we've been talking about Catawba Park for 15 years. You know, certainly, it's been, ever since I've been on council, it's been discussed, but it's not been funded. I think we already have the people's buy-in. We're the recreational community of Lake Wiley. They want the park built. The two financing options, price-wise, aren't that huge of a difference to me, so the one that gets it started fastest makes more sense to me. I mean, I'm just, that's what I'm saying, we're, a future council that probably none of us are going to be a part of, maybe, is going to have to deal with the end part of this.
I agree.
And that's okay.
I don't want to get bogged down in indecision.
Let them finish what we started. I'm okay with that.
Well, I think, we just made the decision, obviously, but I just, I'm validating what Alicia's saying because I think she brings up really important points. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, when we're considering borrowing $3.8 million, that we're looking at all the options and really talking it through and understanding the options. That's all I'm saying.
Yep, no problem.
And just to clarify, I don't think that Heather or I were saying that we don't, we don't know or we think that people aren't supportive. I think we were saying just the opposite. We think that people are supportive of the park, and we're supportive of the park, of course. But that's where I'm at.
Okay.
And I would just like to get it, get it all built, so.
Well, I don't want to get it all built yet. But get it started.
I would like to get it, I would like to get it secured.
Yeah.
The funding secured. It's been however many years, your point, Gus.
15, easy.
Let's go ahead, let's identify the funding. This is our opportunity to make a decision, get it all built. Let's, let's make the decision, let's, let's go for it and
For the IPRB.
I mean, like I said, my preference is the GO, but I think you're, you're in a good spot either way. I just, I want the whole thing.
Okay, well, we got three IPRB, one GO. Like I said, well, once the, excuse me, the next step is getting the bids out, okay? They are, they have finished construction plans for phase one. They are working through construction plans of phase two. Construction plans of phase three will be very minimal, obviously, but the engineers are working through those construction plans. So we're going to get phase one out, get it bid as we're on schedule for that, as those bids come in. Obviously, we'll have more to discuss at that point, you know? I mean, you know, Mayor Breton brought up, it could come in less, absolutely. It could also come in at $15 million for phase one, and we're sitting around scratching our heads. So, yeah, I mean, you know, we're about to cross, you know, the first big milestone for Catawba Park, which is great.
In 15 years.
You know? And then
Unbelievable.
We come back, council, here's what we've got, here's the IPRB. That's three months of y'all being able to discuss it more, if you want. Yeah.
Do we foresee the interest rates moving drastically in the next couple of months?
Not in the next couple, but
In our timeframe, we're talking about the IPRB. I mean, sure.
There's always that risk, so.
The significance being half a point at the most.
I think it's the whole vaccine issue. Does the vaccine get rolled out? The economy take off screaming hot again? Then, yes, interest rates rise. Is that a April, May, or August, September, you know, who knows? November, December?
That's what I was thinking with the GO thing. We wait another whole year. The economy goes up, gas prices go back up again, everything, I mean, construction costs are already outrageous. So, let's go. Let's go. Gavel it out, go.
Council comments is the last thing on your agenda for adjournments.
Okay, you want to start with council comments?
Uh, sure. I'll say happy birthday to my daughter, Lillian Rose Dash. She turns four today. So excited to get home to her. I'm good.
Happy birthday, Lily. No, I think we've, this is, this is cool. I mean, I think all of us, you know, we've talked and talked and talked about this being such an important thing that we want to get done this year. And I don't know if you noticed, but blessedly, I hope, 2020 is almost gone.
No kidding.
But we just made a significant step towards getting it done. So other than that, I'll save it for our council meeting.
Well, I just want to thank the council. We've done some significant, had some significant things we've accomplished in our three years with the police station funding and the impact fees. I think we're able to pay for all this. I don't think we would be here now without the impact fees.
No, sorry.
I think we would be four, four or five years away without impact fees. So that was our biggest accomplishment, I think. All play together, we've done this year, you know? Where did that start from? Just some lady called me on the phone and said, I'm thinking about doing this. So
Don't forget Mary, Nate.
I guess, actually, this isn't our last council meeting of the year.
You can do your swan song next week.
We'll, 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 we discuss that at the last council meeting every year, so I'll save it till then.